This special meeting of the Guthrie City Council on the Guthrie Workshop is called to order. Public comments. I can have him wait till we do this thing?
Whatever he prefers.
Lester, would you prefer to wait till we do your -- when we bring your part up?
It's not on the -- it's not on this agenda. Do you mean in the next meeting or do you mean now?
Now.
Oh.
Because we're going to talk about agenda items, right?
Then you can move back for sure.
Okay. So we're going to hold you off just a little bit. Okay, wait. Logan County Economic Development.
Okay. You all have heard me before. You know Logan County Economic Development is all about jobs. I'm just going to hand these out to you for you to review. I will tell you that under the loan customers, these are all from Guthrie except for Lucille's. And Lucille's hires quite a few Guthrie people, believe me. At any rate, that many of them we started with, they were startups when we first started working with them and they've developed many, many jobs. And it's the jobs that support families and the families that spend their money and the sales tax from their income that they're spending in Guthrie is what supports the city. So we just definitely believe in jobs. I'm going to ask, these are our board members and some of our loan customers and I'd just like for them to, I think they would be more influential than I am since you hear me quarterly. But I'd like to introduce Laverne Dowding, Barry Anderson, and John Thomason, who are all three on our loan committee and do, help do the due diligence and the processing of the loan and make the decisions. And then Barry, Barry Cogburn is one of our loan recipients who has created, you'll notice in his Prestige Point development out there, there are now eight companies where there were none before. And there are 133 stable jobs out there. So just if you would just, does everyone have one of these?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I say yes, okay. Okay, I'd just like to, why don't you start with John and then just very quickly because we only have five minutes.
Okay. Just a couple of points that--
We need you at the front table, please. Do you stand?
Just a couple of points that I wanted to make is, you can see on here our board and some of our loan committee members. We have a, I think, a really good group put together. You know, here's, there's a list of customers here, Kay mentioned, our loan program. You know, we, we do other things besides the loan program, of course, not everything works out, but you know, some of the Economic Development Committee members have flown to Chicago at their own expense on behalf of businesses here in Guthrie is just one example. There's a lot of working with businesses on tax credits. You know, Kay's got the city and the airports and grant money. But there, you know, our loan program is our biggest initiative, is something we can't talk about in a lot of detail, but Barry can probably give you a little clue about some of the impact that that loan program has. Several years ago, the Economic Development Council made the commitment to hire Kay, which most of you know she's with Meridian Technology and worked with our incubator system over there and managed that. But we stepped up, made a commitment to hire Kay and applied for additional loan funds. At that time, the city committed to 25,000 a year funding. You know, you probably see our financials, we do show a profit. What you should understand though is of our $91,000 profit for this past year, 89,000 of that went to principal payments. So our cash excess was really only $1,200. So we do operate at a profit. We have a lot of debt to pay. It's the debt on the money that we're loaning to other companies. And so that, like I say, 89,000 of that 91,000 profit went to pay debt service so that we can maintain this fund to keep it circulating through our community. So, you know, I don't know if everybody knows that much background about it, but that's some of the details that I did want you to know. Even though we show a profit, you know, we're only having excess of $1,000. So the city's funding is critical to the Economic Development Council.
Keep it short, we've got 30 seconds.
We just appreciate your support. The EDC is a unique public-private funded partnership and we do believe that Guthrie derives the greatest benefit of that. So we just like that in consideration and I don't need to repeat the things that John said. Was that under three seconds?
You did good.
We would celebrate our knowledge.
The only thing I'll add to that is the membership of the EDC is comprised of probably, what, 40 businesses?
Or 60 really.
Or 60, okay. And some individuals and that type of thing that are primarily here in Guthrie, some other areas too, but primarily here in Guthrie. And we believe in the EDC as well from our own personal involvement and we invest a lot of money. Some of these businesses contribute $2,000 and $3,000 a year to the operation of the EDC. We like smaller businesses as well, so they contribute a little bit less. But I just want you to know that the membership pays to play also. So thank you for your support.
Is it, do I get time?
It's up to the fair and council.
Doug, does the five minutes start over here on?
No.
Our community has to support the EDC. The EDC has made a huge difference from a business perspective. What it does from a business point of view is it helps us manage our rate risk is one of the things. We did a partnership with the EDC and at that time First Capital Bank, now Interbank, and it allowed me to develop Prestige Point. And from Prestige Point, we developed what was 133 jobs out there that's stable, a lot of new businesses came there. And it also helped by default or by association with the Huddle House Jimmy Zag, now Legends project. So it makes a huge difference. So our community has to support that. I think it's a tremendous thing because they get that rural development money, the fundings and all those things that come available through there. Of course, with the EDC, I love Kay's quarterly meetings and stuff, a lot of information shared there. So we really need to support that program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thanks, Kay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay here or you can go. It depends on, you know, if you want to watch the rest of it.
We can use it unless--
Oh, okay.
Were we taking any action on that or?
It's in, it'll be in your, in budget decision making. It's not an action item. It'll be in the budget.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Then we'll throw you out. All right. Number two, discussion regarding fiscal year 14 budget.
You know, one of my main roles as your city manager is to present to you a budget. Would not be able to do so without, Ken Biggs is working on this one for her first year in anticipation of, Wanda tells me every day she's going to leave. And so one day, one day she actually will. And so with this, the, the knowledge that, that Wanda has is absolutely incredible about the budget. You know, 20-plus years of running finance and we're trying to transfer that knowledge to both, both Kim and I this year. So what we did is really just put it together, you received in your packet a budget at a glance. And I'm calling that because we're not going to go into detail unless y'all are just dying to do so. So I'll kind of give you an idea what the plan is.
Do we have a calendar?
Yeah. Okay. Somewhere on your back page should be a calendar. Here's one of our issues. OML is technically the 17th, 18th, and 19th, but I anticipate that we are going to have a council meeting on September 17th. So what we have on the calendar is to workshop this, no, public hearing it and adopt it on the first Tuesday. But what that means is that if y'all want to do a workshop, we're going to have to squeeze that in next week. Or if you want to come in and do one-on-ones with me, I'm welcome to that. When we leave today, we'll give you the bulk of the data. So this is homework and go through it if you want to go and see how much boots are. And this is the detail. I'll tell you what changes are different from last year because it's really almost a copy and paste. So I didn't know if y'all wanted to do a workshop with, so let's get through budget at a glance and see if you'll want to do a workshop next week. If not, you could come back on the first. You're always welcome to come to my office. I will torture you and go through this line by line if you would like. I assure you, I haven't, I have not seen the, the staff work as hard yet until they did on budget. It is a line by line, dollar by dollar putting together a budget. It is, it's an amazing process. We've been in that process for months. There are still some changes that we anticipate. We're still negotiating on insurance. So there was a negotiations meeting today. So there are certain things that we will not know until, well, maybe a few more weeks. We're, there's a few other items, like we're expecting a rebate on some things. So there, there always are these moving pieces and what we'll do is do a budget amendment as we, whether that's an increase of revenues or an expenditure, we'll, we'll keep y'all posted. So we try to get a snapshot right here, end of August, beginning of September to get it nailed down as close as we can. And as y'all know, things always change. For example, the concert coming up, of course, there was no way to know that that was coming when you did last year's budget. So of course, we're, we're very flexible with items that come up. So I won't read to you at all unless you're wanting that, please stop me. But introduction is basically, you know, I constantly call a budget, it's a policy document. It's really truly an action plan. It's, it's y'all giving us direction of which way that you want to go. So it's a competing interest document. It's what do you find is priorities and what do you don't and what would you like to fund. Budget philosophy remains to be that the city wants to deliver, deliver excellent service at the greatest value. And that's the attempts that you'll see in the budget. As we met in June of 2013 and to do the council retreat, you establish the following goals. Accommodate long-term infrastructure, support expansion of passenger rail efforts, operate with financial efficiency and integrity, create and sustain a diversity of recreational, educational, and cultural opportunities that enrich the lives of our citizens and visitors, revitalize neighborhoods and focus on the aesthetic value of the community, create and enhance the value of the local economy through progressive business development initiatives. So what we try to do from those goals is attempt to fund them. And that's sometimes a little bit difficult as we follow, and I know Jeff Taylor has a, a great knowledge on rail efforts. We're not seeing great success for Guthrie right now in the effort of passenger rail. So even if we attempted to throw X amount of dollars to it, it, it still just may not be in the cards. So we attempt to fund what we can. If we look at long-term infrastructure, in the current revenues that we have right now, I actually don't have anything for you to be able to deliver in, in long-term infrastructure. What I can say is that we, we use the entire user fee that is on the, the bill of our customers and we dedicate that entire fund to capital improvement on streets. That helps. Infrastructure as far as water and wastewater goes, I don't think I, I have to remind you, but the only way that we're going to be able to do anything is to increase rates. We are approaching our third year of not breaking even. And so without an increase in rates, I, I find number one unattainable. Operating with financial efficiency and integrity, not really a financial move unless we wanted to move to a different type of website or a different type of, to show transparency. But as far as efficiency, we feel that within our operations, we can obtain that goal. Diversity of recreational, educational, and cultural opportunities. Funding is already in the budget for certain, certain items of that. Revitalizing neighborhoods, we did not increase, we attempted to increase the, the line item for dilapidated houses, for abatements. What I did realize is that we weren't going to obtain the amount of money that was in that line item of $30,000 this year. So what we're doing is aggressively trying to spend that. Believe it or not, sometimes it's hard because of the timing of how you do abatements to expend the entire budget. So I did maintain it 30,000, but still with a very aggressive approach to abatement. Create and enhance the value of the local economy through progressive business development initiatives. This city, that was two years ago, the decision to hire an economic development individual that is still a continuing goal is to attempt progressive development initiatives. Some of our challenges, I went ahead and put in a document, I know Dr. Simpson and I had a, a brief little conversation about this. Some of the things that I'm, I'm new to Oklahoma, but I wanted this to be very transparent. You know, the, some of the challenges that we have is being the only state in the Union that doesn't take in property tax for municipal revenue is, is highly interesting in the state of Oklahoma. And the way that they do the taxing on property tax, I went ahead and laid that out for you. For example, our school system, system is at, or Guthrie Public Schools, is at 76.29 mils. That is the lowest mileage rate in the county, in Logan County. We are, we are lower than Cashion. We are a low, low property tax rate for our schools. County health is 2.56, established by, established by state statute. County is, the county general is also established by state statute. So if you have a $100,000 fair cash value home, which the average in Logan County is 116,000. So let's take 100,000. They actually only tax on 12%, not, not the total percent, which is also new to me coming into the state. Usually you're appraised, you're, you're taxed on your appraisal value in other states. This is taxed actually on 12%. So if I own a $100,000 home in Logan County, I'm paying $1,069 a year in, in property tax. So kind of, we just wanted to go over a little bit of tax and of course, the city does not actualize any of that, that revenue. Okay, the next taxing, just to be clear, you know, our primary, primary two sources of revenues are sales tax and utility revenues. As you see, the, the monthly sales tax that we monitor every 10th of the month, we're up 6.8% year-to-date from where we were last year to where we are today. We were only up 2% from last August to this August if I was to take those two August and put them side by side. So overall, we're at 6.8% increase. The city did budget $3.8 million last year in sales tax. We plan to achieve about 4.3 million. In an effort to remain conservative on sales tax, we increased that as a projected revenues of 4.6 million for next year, accommodating 300 and some change thousand for the gentleman of the road tour that we anticipate to collect. In your line item budget, you'll see that those two items are separated. The effort to separate it is so that council could take a look at that next year, see what we anticipate, what we revenueed, which of course, we revenueed two months after the event. Once we recognize that revenue, then I would probably come to council and ask what kind of one-time hits would you want to do? In other words, that's not a repeating revenue line item. We more than likely won't bring a concert of that size next year. So for 310,000, and we originally talked about downtown improvements. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Why does it, the, on the graph show taxes in $5 million?
Where are you?
I'm looking at the graph. Sorry, I'm a little bit ahead of you, but you're talking about what you budgeted to get. You have on the graph--
Taxes also include beverage tax, state, there's some road tax, there's a whole lot of taxes there. That paint version, if we broke up the pie chart anymore, you're talking about that one? 5.07? That's more than sales tax. Sales tax will be 4.610 and then this also includes--
But that's as a revenue--
Other taxes.
Okay.
Yeah. Cox Cable, you're, there's, if we broke it up, it would be a whole bunch of pies. So we just put taxes together.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, but revenue wise, we're looking, looking at more than $4 million.
Yes, yes. Thank you. All righty. So we did an example. If you were to buy a TV at Walmart, $299.95, where would your taxes go? So just to show you, the state takes a 4.5%, the county takes 1%, and the city takes 3%. At any time, if you're curious of what are competing cities are taking in for sales tax, you can look that up online, grab me, I'll share that with you. But it ranges 3% to 4% all across the state. Another challenge that we've seen especially in the past year is that just a rising cost to provide utility services. Our chemicals at our water treatment plant, there was no way to predict about a 13% increase on, on just chemicals. Additional to that, you know, if I, if I can talk briefly about water, as we've watched all of the expenses, whether it be on maintenance of aging equipment because of our inability to fund capital items through a fleet replacement fund, then we're attempting to constantly fix broken down equipment. And that has, that has really hit our budget on a maintenance line item. We, we are definitely in the red when it comes to maintenance across the city throughout many departments. And that's the inability to have capital cash. And that's why I have brought to y'all leasing options in an effort to, to soften the burden of extending that kind of capital. What you'll see in the budget on, on those items is that as we continue to do those lease purchase, lease capital purchases, we only put in a one 10, 10-wheel dump truck on a lease purchase. We absolutely do not have the cash flow in an effort to replace equipment right now. Or it could just get stolen. That's also another option is what, what happened to us two weeks ago. So there's, there's always that option. So some of those challenges are just increase in chemicals, maintenance, and equipment continue to hit us. We have not touched water rates in an effort to subsidize operations in 10 years. Not many businesses can continue to function that way. And I will tell you, that is our greatest challenge. If y'all want to keep me for four or five years, it will continue to be a challenge unless we address creative waste revenue or just flat out cutting out departments and expenditures. That, that's where we're at today. Okay. What is in the budget? It's comprised of several funds. Really mostly what we talk about is a, a general fund and the utility fund. That is kind of the two most common. There's many ancillary other funds that we'll discuss here in a moment. Other than sales tax revenues, we look at what our utility revenues are. Of, of course, we're thankful for a wet season in some ways. We, we, I look at the fire chief because as you experience growth right now, eventually that dies off and creates a whole lot of debris that burns really quickly. And so, you know, even though we've had a wet, a wet season and we're thankful for the lush green grass, at the same time, that means that we haven't met our revenues for this year on water. We anticipate for FY14, a total of 3.8 has been budgeted for utility, no, 4.6, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. 4.6 in FY14 revenues. That is the predominant funding source. And then it breaks that out. How much comes from water sales is 1.87. 780 is budgeted in sewer and 1.16 comes in for sanitation collections, which is mostly a pass-through anyways to pay the expenditure for that contract. Other revenues include permits, franchise fees, user fees, et cetera. On Thursday, as a reminder, I'll be meeting with the rate and fee advisory committee. We have multiple, multiple items on that agenda. It meets at noon here at City Hall. We are recommending some increases on permits fees to make us competitive. For example, we're not even meeting the community of Cedar Valley, we provide trash service to. They're actually paying less to us than what we pay Waste Connections. So according to their contract in 1988, they're supposed to pay 25 cents above. Our bad. They have not been. We need to correct that as soon as possible. There's items such as water taps. It costs us more to purchase it than what we're charging our customers. I have many, many more examples, but for that fun show come Thursday at noon, what we want is a recommendation from the rate and fee advisory committee in an effort to bring that to you guys and do a budget amendment to see if, if we can get those rates. It's not about making money, it's about breaking even on some of these items.
Not losing money.
This is about not losing money every year and not being able to keep up. So that's, you know, there, there are funds, well, I'll get to some of those funds. So at a glance, there's your revenues on the top chart. I, I know it's a little wordy, but we just really want to try to, to show you as transparent as possible where we anticipate money to be coming in for revenues. And then at the chart below, you can see your major chunks are always typically in a city going to fire and police. And then you can see the breakdown from there of what our operations are. The total number of budget employees for just coming up here is 113 full-time, five part-time, and four seasonal. The only difference is from last year, we, we have, are requesting a parts, a full-time employee and in an effort to do so, we would cut out two of his seasonal, even though it's, it's, so it's a little bit more of a cost. What we're experiencing is that the seasonal workers are not as productive as what we see whenever we have a full-time employee. With the new healthcare reform, with the Affordable Care Act, the, the federal government also only will allow us to have a seasonal worker work 29 hours a week. What we've done up until this point is they worked 40 hours a week during mowing season. Currently, we can't do that. I don't know about you guys with your labor forces, but it's very difficult for us to find an employee to come in for 29 hours a week for four months. It's, it's becoming more and more difficult. So in an effort to, to abide with federal guidelines, we're asking that we have a full-time employee and cut out two of his seasonal workers. Another one is basically recalling a position that was in the budget a few years ago. Something that we're experiencing right now is because of the lack of maintenance of our lift stations, we have nine, nine lifts--
Eight lift stations.
I'm sorry. Eight lift stations currently. What wastewater and water departments should be doing on a daily basis is checking those lift stations and, and performing repairs and checking all sorts of things that go to a lift station. That's in a normal operating department of a water and wastewater. We aren't doing that. One of those effects is probably the, the brash of phone calls that we received about a month ago, and I know some of my council members did, about murky water, et cetera. What, what's ultimately happening is since we cut that position, we haven't been flushing hydrants as we should. We don't have the staff to do that. I'm asking for one person that would fall underwater so that we can get our, our lift stations and our lines back up to par. We just have experienced great customer outcry and that, that's the situation. Jim and I have talked before about sometimes it's where someone's so good that they work themselves out of a job because we had no complaints about those items because we had somebody doing it. So that person was, that position was cut out of the budget through attrition. We just never replaced it. And I'm asking that we recall that position. I don't count our city attorney and municipal judge in this document in the graph, but I just do want to remind you that those are contract employees, but I didn't count them as what we refer to in the chart, but they are in the budget. The stabilization funding, great idea by council. This is a, a policy that was much needed within the city. The stabilization fund calls for a, a fund balance to be transferred into a separate account in an effort of what you may call a rainy day fund. It's a restricted funds. There are certain rules on using those funds and then currently it has a balance of 1.123 million. Our goal is to every year put money aside into that fund in an effort to reach 16% of our operating budget. And that percentage is in the 2 million, I'm sorry, I forgot that number. So we, what we're doing, so this year, we do anticipate ending in the black for this year. The, the, some of that balance, if not all, then will be moved over to that stabilization fund. The, the, the hard part of managing a budget and developing a budget for next year is that for years, the city anticipated that fund balance to roll over. So let's say that you didn't get X, Y, and Z done, don't do it this year, don't worry about it, I'll just roll it next year. Because of that stabilization ordinance, we're not at that luxury to roll over. And so we, we support that rainy day fund, let me be very clear. But it's a very aggressive move to do without a timeline. In other words, the way the policy is written, we have to set aside all of that money. We can't say we just want to put aside 50% and then roll 50% in the general fund. We're aggressively doing it. We do believe we're going to hit that 60, that 16% of operating budget within two or three years. So in other words, for X amount of years, the city never had a stabilization fund and then we're going to achieve it in two years. It's highly, highly aggressive and it does strap us for cash. If y'all want to direct me to go a different way and split that out, I'd be happy to. If not, we're just being very conservative. And, and we can survive being conservative. I will tell you in a year, two years from now, we cannot remain being this conservative without a vector truck, without certain pieces of equipment that allow us to do our job. I would definitely recommend, once we hit that stabilization fund, we've got to start funding capital, capital items. We're struggling. So stabilization funding. General fund, you know, this houses basic services, parks, reg, police, streets, general governmental administration. The total is 7.79 million. Without transfers, that amount is actually 5.12. And not, you'll get the detail of that general fund, but a lot of that's a copy and paste over from, from last year. Fire and EMS fund, we've experienced one year of separating that fund. I think that was an effort to show some true cost to what the, the fire department and EMS is doing. It is a non-revenue generating fund. The general government subsidizes that and has continued to increase to subsidize that exponentially over the last five years. And I can give you all those numbers if you need those in detail, give me a call. The, the city in FY14 anticipates to subsidize that fund at the tune of 990-some thousand dollars. We are asking that the rate and fee advisory, advisory committee do, do increase some of those ambulance fees and just get us competitive with other laxized cities. Hopefully that will, that will help. GPWA, it's a separate legal entity, as you know, from the city of Guthrie. That houses the municipal pool, utilities, and-- the municipal pool, utilities, and administration. That's a 5.7 million fund and 3.363 without the transfers. GIDA, y'all can read that, those are, we get into our smaller funds. Hotel motel tax, just a reminder, the city collects 4% of a hotel motel tax. Two-thirds of that money funds the CBB through the entity of the Chamber of Commerce. The other one-third of that funds parks, and we attempt to do one-time hits on parks. In other words, we attempt to do some capital items. We don't take it to salaries, we don't take it, et cetera. We take it to beautification projects or much-needed asphalt and more capital items. FY13, we anticipate collecting $166,000, and FY14, we are anticipating $202,000. The water treatment plant fund, this is where that water treatment plant fee is collected. The debt service for the new water treatment plant is paid on that fund. We are budgeting a debt service of 1.2 million, and then there's a transfer of $400,000 from the GPWA fund, and we rely on fund balance to meet the debt service. Once again, we won't be able to do that long-term. These are definitely short-term ideas for funding. CMOM, y'all have been through some of that. It's a project, it's a debt service where that's paid and annual sewer line improvement money is budgeted. We've almost completed all CMOM projects, but we continue to leave that open in an effort to address some sanitary needs. There will be a time in the next couple of years that I come to you about wastewater plant improvements. We do have one item in the capital budget that I'll get to that will help us in an effort to protect that wastewater plant and avoid any potential future fines. We have been fined in the past at our wastewater plant, and we continue to struggle with the maintenance needs in wastewater. The airport, as you know, is a joint partnership with Edmund. Basically, we pay 50% of operations, Edmund pays 50% of operations. Just to remind you that the operational expenses is about $183,000, with only projecting a revenue of 30, what are we at on that one? 35,000? It's, I'm sorry, it's around 35,000. I can get you all those revenues. So in other words, we have $183,000 operating fund that should be revenue-producing. It is not, and it's a $35,000 revenue, so therefore, you must subsidize it with the general fund. So another place where the general fund assists in subsidizing what should be revenue-producing funds. Oklahoma City Waterline Fund has a current balance of 1.902 million. Cemetery care fund, we set that aside. We did, we were, we did use some of that in an effort to pay some for some equipment very recently. I won't go through the debt. On the general fund side, we have zero debt. It's actually relatively amazing. Most cities do carry a level of debt. A lot of cities don't take the Dave Ramsey approach to responsible local government fiscal responsibilities. They take an approach of kind of this lease purchase, or they take an approach that there's no way that we'll ever be able in one year fund all the capital needs that we need. And so we are light on debt on general fund. It's not in a bad fiscal, fiscal shape. Capital improvements. So my staff, and how excited they are, and the big dreams that they have, and all the great ideas that they have, we have cut this probably over the past three months by over 1.9 million. I mean, if you really wanted, and I don't think those were, I mean, honestly, when you look at my original list, those aren't high in the sky. Those were, a vector trucks, 400 and something thousand. I mean, these are, these are major pieces of equipment with a lot, a lot of capital needs. We whittled that down. We're anticipating a new ambulance, which is actually paid for by the county, in an effort for our police department to qualify on range. We have to have a, some range improvements, otherwise, we've got to ship them out of county to do so. Street improvement program, that's just a continuing of using the user fee in an effort to completely fund that capital. The sludge removal program is the one item that I spoke about that will help us get rid of our sludge in a more timely manner out of the wastewater treatment plant. I have done this exact same process in another city. It will amazingly improve the way that we get rid of our sludge. It is $80,000. It's much better than a $10,000 a day fine from DEQ. Citywide telephone system will actually save us money. We have a capital project that is going to save us money, so I just ding ding ding. That is moving us from analog to VoIP. We had an interesting experience a couple of months ago where we had a storm, and we lost our voicemail for a week. It was fantastic, I mean, it was terrible. And this is an effort to fix that system, save some dollars. And what we did do during that time, just to show how effective and efficient we are, we did transfer all phone numbers over to GPWA, so I want to thank them for dealing with taking all the messages for the city. We will continue on our lease purchase agreements for vehicles and equipment. The only new item would be the lease purchase for the 10-wheel dump truck, and then we have a capital improvement, sewer line improvements to the ADA groups, but that would be dependent upon an ADA grant. I will tell you, we were just notified by ACOG this week that it does not look probable. We wanted to submit our application next month. The federal government continues to restrict that ADA funds, and they will not submit us in the September cycle, but they will submit us in the January cycle for that money. You basically compete against other cities, and they have some other cities in line now for those monies. And as much as we want to compete against those, we actually think it'll be safer to wait till January to not compete with the Edmund and the other cities. These projects, anyway, so then grants, we're bashing for grants. I mean, one thing about grants that we continue, and this is something staff really, really looks for is grants, our issue is, for example, it's the match. It's the 20%. It's, you know, when we talk about sidewalks to Walmart, you're talking $2 million. I can't find a 20% match. I mean, that's, it's a, it's a constant battle. You know, the non-matching grants in the state that we can find are usually for safety issues, et cetera, and those aren't, those aren't what fits. And so we do continue to look for grants. I don't want y'all to think that we don't. It's just something that, when you have to have the 20% match on millions of dollars, it's just not there. Conclusion, we face financial challenges in the future. We have potential litigation, as we know. We still have two cases. That does put a little bit different spin on this year's budget. It's very difficult for us to place in there what we can assume, so we don't assume in this budget. We go off of facts, and we do our best to do that. There's, hey, P-card revenue was up this year, right? Y'all implemented before my time here, purchasing cards, so we have some, few silver linings, but probably not enough to deal with our maintenance issues. Here's what our, here's what our next steps are, is I'm going to pass these out. I avoided handing to you and fear that you would start actually reading them line by line. Go home, get in your comfy chair, and take a look line by line. I apologize, on our original documentation that went to you, our revenues weren't fully calculated, so I want to, I want to thank Mike at the News Leader for always being very cognizant of our numbers, and he did report correctly from what he read. Unfortunately, it's not a 3% decrease. It is a 5% increase if you look at it. So I want to be very transparent, and that's our apologies. Those increases, though, it's a little bit hard for me to explain. It's not buying or providing more services, it's that we're dealing with a realistic budget. If you go back and look at 2011, 2012, and even what we're dealing with in the current year budget, some of those line items were not realistic, and fuel is fuel, and unless we want our police department to park and ride horses, I'm going to have to buy fuel. So we're busted on some of those accounts. There were just some accounts that were cut down so low that we would not be able to obtain the level of service that our customers are used to being provided. So that's where we're at. What I, I want to actually finally be quiet, but I wanted to give you a blast of the budget. I want you to be able to take it home, digest it, and, you know, Mayor, I would take your direction for council, for questions, but also take your direction to see if you would like to do another workshop if you want to get in detail, or if you want to gather that information later, however y'all want to do that.
Do you have time to do us one-on-one?
Sure. I mean, I'll make it. Sure. I mean, if I can, yeah, yeah.
Would you prefer me?
And to be honest, I don't know if all council members would want to, and if they don't, then that's fine. I'd be happy to.
That's fine with me.
I think a one-on-one would be working to her schedule, working to our schedule. Nobody have to take off work?
I have no plans this weekend, except for apparently I'm pie judge.
Yes.
Pie-eating judge, that's what I need, thanks guys. And so, anything this weekend is fine, too.
Okay. All right, so we'll do one-on-one. You'll just contact Serena to see when you want to set that up on the budget after you look through it, make a good look at it, see what you can come up with.
Any additional from finance?
Yeah.
They did this all over.
Really? This is y'all's fault?
She did.
Her fault?
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion from council? Anybody? No?
Are we, are we going to talk about some items on the agenda tonight?
As soon as I get through with, yeah.
We got short, short. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Number three, I guess, discussion regarding agenda items. I was going to go with Lester Branch first.
Yeah, that's what I want to talk about.
Hot seat, Lester, please. You get to listen to me for a little bit. I've got to tell council what transpired over the weekend after the planning commission met. Charlie Branch called me and said that they didn't fully understand the process that the planning commission wanted. Deal was that it's an all-metal building in a commercial zone. Commercial, or metal buildings going industrial zone. They said if you put a wainscote around it, made of brick or the cement board, 36 inches high, that's about average, somewhere around 36 inches high, on the east and north side, they explained to Lester the deal, they would have no problem with that construction in that manner to dress that building up. But at the time, at the meeting, Lester did not agree to that based upon guidance given to him by Charlie Branch. Charlie called me. He says, "I will agree to that." I called the three members on the planning commission that voted no. I explained what Charlie wanted, that he would do the wainscote, he would do whatever it is they said. They just wanted to get that building up and do it right. They weren't looking for shortcuts or anything else. So the three dissenting members on the planning committee said that if he will agree to what their conditions were, which is a 36-inch wainscote with a cement board around the east and north side, they do not have a problem with the council making a decision on this thing otherwise from what they did. And so, did I explain that correctly and properly to your satisfaction?
I think so. We don't want to do the cement board, we'll do the brick.
You'll do the brick. So, and so if that goes through, so you're happy with a 36-inch wainscote on the east and the north side, which is a problem that was at the planning commission the other night?
Yes, yes. I'm very satisfied with that.
Everybody on council understand? Any questions for me? When we go to council, we'll have a motion, whatever we'll do, and then if there's any more discussion, but.
So it's a brick, not cement?
He's going to do brick. Yeah, same. Yeah. So he'll do the brick thing. And it's strictly going to be a warehouse, nothing else in there. That's what's been said.
Storage.
And it's, now Charlie said instead of working out of back of his truck, he can have a building work out. So, and it's a nice-looking building. They had a picture of it and everything, but anyway. All right, do I need to cover anything else with that?
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you got to talk about it.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
You have a seat if you'll be at the city council.
That seat wasn't very hot, very hot.
If you'll be at the city council meeting, then we would appreciate it.
I'll be there.
Any other discussions on agenda items for anybody? Good to go? Number four, request for future items of discussion. Since Juan is not going to retire, we can't talk about that yet.
Same.
Mayor, I sent y'all a letter that asks the trial, the initiative petition, the last witness, we're going to do over in Stillwater on September 5th at 10:00.
For deposition or for court?
That is for court.
Court.
We'll be trying to, trying to lapse witness over there. If we'd have waited till we could get into Logan County to get a courtroom, it would have been October, and I told Judge, we'd like to get this issues out.
So we need to be there for them?
You don't have to. So this is sort of a strange way we're doing this, if you want to be-
Is this in the just judges' chambers or anything? This is out?
It'll be in the courtroom with the reporter, but it'll be just the one witness.
And that's it? Okay.